Oh, is that there?
(laughing).
Good evening. Welcome to the December 3, 2014 Board of Education meeting. We've been in an executive session since 6:00 PM to discuss the district's contractual negotiations with a collective bargaining unit. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see we have quite a few PIG students here tonight. Yes. Your requirement is that you stay till 9:00 o'clock. If the meeting is still going on at 9:00, 9:00, we'll take a break. You all need to come up and sign out. We'll have sign-out sheets up here, and if you have forms that need to be signed by any of the board members, we'll do that for you. If the meeting gets done before 9:00, which I doubt it will, you'll get released at that time. We'll start with introductions.
Lynn Lenhart.
Diane Steever.
Christine Bach.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Wijcasinger.
Michael Cooper.
And Judy Kehoe.
And Joanne Cunningham is out on a personal medical matter. She may miss the next couple of meetings. We'll start with approval of the minutes, the minutes of the November 19, 2014 regular board meeting. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Next, Student Senate report. We have the representative from the Student Senate. We got two of them tonight.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Cato, and I'm the president of Student Senate.
I'm Gabby Sanders.
So, last meeting, we spoke about implementing a student forum, and we met with Mr. Landry, and we will have our first student forum on January 7 at 2:15 in D-122. D-122. And students will sign up ahead of time. We're going to create a forum on Google Doc so they can sign up online, or we'll have a sign-up sheet in Mr. Iron's room where they can sign up, just so we can estimate how many students will be present at the meeting. And all of the high school's administration will be present, and all the Senate members will be present as well.
As you know, this past weekend, we attended the New York State Senate Leadership Conference. At the conference, we learned also, like, a lot of leadership skills and also a lot of ideas that other senators, like, implement in their schools, and ideas of how to make our senate better. We had roundtable discussions with senators around the state regarding fundraising ideas, ways to raise money for charities, and stuff about along the nature. A lot of the senators, we learned, do a lot of work with charity and community stuff, and I think our senate will be heading in that direction, too. I know this year, we have a big push to incorporate more student activity in the senate and making our senate more open, and I think it's important to do that with the community as well. Also, there's every year, the NYSCSA, which is the name of the statewide senate leadership group, they support a charity, and this year, it's American Cancer Society. So, we'll be partaking in that and raising money on behalf of Bethlehem for that.
At the beginning of the program, we listened to a speaker named Ted Wise. He was an amazing speaker. We'd definitely be interested in having him come here and doing an anti-bullying or leadership program throughout the district. He was very hands-on, and he got students who probably wouldn't normally pay attention to pay attention. And I thought he was very interesting, and he has a website and a Twitter, so he communicates with students on a personal level, and he'll sit in on classes, just to see how students interact with teachers, and how they act throughout the school, and then address different problems at the end of the day. So, we really like that.
Good. How many of Bethlehem students went, and how many total students were at the conference?
Eight Bethlehem students went, along with one advisor, and we're not sure about the total, but 200.
Great.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions?
We were one of the smaller groups.
Anyone have any other questions?
What was the name of that speaker you just mentioned?
Ted Wise.
Okay. I think it would be one thing to bring him here as a keynote speaker. If you wanted him to sit into classrooms and almost act, in a way, as a consultant, that would be a different issue that I would imagine you would have to work through with the administration if that was appropriate here.
Actually, Chelsea, I think Ted Wise is a great idea, like Charmaine was saying. If we could get more information presented to us on the speaker, I would be very interested to hear about it.
Okay. We'll get that for you.
We have his contact information.
Great. Yeah.
Well, even the website would be helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your update.
(inaudible).
The next agenda item is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Downey. Members of the Board of Education, I'm going to keep mine relatively short, and I know you're all waiting on bated breath for that. One is, we have a lot of honorees here tonight that we've been fortunate enough to be able to go out and see throughout the fall season, so I want to get right to that as quickly as possible. But I also want to send out a congratulations to Linda Grimes-Picarazzi for a very successful presentation on close reading in speech-language remediation at the New York State Reading Association Conference this past November. She's been working very hard and did an outstanding job on her poster presentation, so if you get a chance, students, and you see her as she's at the middle school, or know her, please pass along the commendations, that she does an outstanding job for the district, and we appreciate her bringing recognition and acclaim to Bethlehem Central. In addition, ladies and gentlemen, just to keep it short, we have several discussions that we may have to have throughout the night, but we'll try to keep them to the point that we've talked about the national grid request to put in a power station very close to Eagle, as well as the high school. If you would, we'd remind everyone, please go to our website for information on that. We'll be sending out some school news network notifiers, so that individuals within the community will be aware of this situation, as well as the potential hearing for the zoning Board of Appeals as they make the request to change some zoning, I think zoning regulations for their requested site down on Van Dyke Road. For us, as a high school, it's very important, because no matter what, every student in Bethlehem Central will come to this school at one time or another and potentially be impacted by any potential change in that zoning. So, we'd ask you to look at that. Our PIG students, if that's possible, that would be an outstanding event to get some in-service hours to hear the debate and the discussion on that. I hear from the past with the cell phone tower and so forth, they were quite lively, so the board meetings can sort of be a little drab at times, so please consider that. In addition, you know, I want to turn the mic over to our athletic director, who is, although he hasn't finished a year yet here, he has certainly been busy, and at this point, he's coming to the end of his first real fall season in the district, and I know he has some exciting news to say about all of our fall teams, and especially three individual teams and some individuals here tonight. So, Mr. Keys, you have the mic.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to say what an incredible fall we've had. Before us, we have several teams, several state qualifiers from particular athletic programs from the fall. However, this past fall, Bethlehem achieved a great deal of success, not only from these programs here tonight, but many programs sustained on-field successes that they had not seen in years. So, truly an outstanding fall. We had some road bumps along the way, just dealing with the flexibility of our capital projects, which are coming out great, but the flexibility and the teamwork between our coaching staff, our community, our student athletes, of course, really truly made it a very successful season, so I do thank you for your support. With that, I would like to have our first team honored, and I'm going to get our PowerPoint First team that I would like to honor tonight is our state semifinalists, our girls varsity soccer team, and before I have the girls come up, I would like Coach Tom Rogan to come join me up at the podium. Firstly, this is one of three incredibly gorgeous, important plaques that our girls brought home to us this fall. This is their fifth out of the last seven years we've been section-two champions, and it was a very non-traditional, almost in some ways, an unexpected road. We ended a very strong season with a 10-4-2 record, which earned us the number-six seed in the section-two AA playoffs, and Coach Rogan's amazing team then went on an incredible playoff run, defeating the number-three Columbia team, very talented team, at home, taking down number-two Shenandoah, and then, of course, taking down number-one Saratoga to capture the section-two championship before heading out west and defeating a very strong and very consistent Liverpool team. That brought us to the Cortland area for the state tournament, where we faced off against a perennial power in North Rockland, and the girls played their hearts out, very, very cold, little snow that day, and we dropped a 1-0 contest, but I think a tremendous show of heart, character, and a very young team. We had two outstanding seniors who provided us leadership, but we're returning many, many students next year, and we expect to have another, hopefully, exciting season. So, with that, I'd like to start introducing each of the young ladies. I'll have them come down to Dr. Douglas. Ellie Bell. Jensen Banana. Sophia Calabrese. Madison Earring. Celine Gumaestop. Cassie Haotao. Grace Hoteling. Miranda Manziano. Olivia Miranda. Holly Moore. Callie Noonan. Casey Oliver. Shannon Russo. Kaylee Rickert. Andrea Sax. And Ellie Warner Russo. Fantastic season, ladies.
(inaudible).
The next program I would like to honor is our boys varsity volleyball team, no stranger to very long, deep falls. I would like to bring up our coach, Coach James O'Keefe. Tell you a little bit about the boys volleyball season. Once again, suburban council, South champions, defeated Shenandoah to capture the section-two championship, their fifth consecutive section-two championship, Division I, before defeating Suffolk High School and Baldwinsville in the regional playoffs, earning, again, their fifth consecutive trip to the Division I state finals held at Glens Falls Civic Center. We had some injuries, caught some outstanding competition at Glens Falls, as you would expect, before falling in pool play, but incredible season for our young men. At this point, I'd like them to come up when you hear your name. Aaron Clark. Connor Kirby. Luke Kubish. Matthew Light. Brian Malsen. Nick Mazone. Kyle Morelli. Aaron Rodriguez. John Seika. Ryan Scheffer. And Andrew Wolner. And here is our boys volleyball state finalist plaque.
(inaudible).
At this time, I'm going to be honoring five young ladies who qualified for the state championships held in Ithaca a couple of weeks ago. First, I'd like to bring up our girls swim coach, Coach Allison Ayers. Before bringing out our 200-meter state qualifying team, I would like to also honor an outstanding diver. Coach Goff is unable to be with us tonight, but Coach Ayers is happy to fill in, and I'd like to bring up Annie Burdick. Annie was a state qualifier, is now the BC record holder for the 11 dive score, and actually finished 22nd in the state, an outstanding accomplishment, and went quite deep during the state tournament at Ithaca. Great job, Annie. And now, I'd like to introduce you to our state qualifying 200-meter relay team, had an outstanding showing at sectionals, and almost duplicated their time over at states. I'd like to bring up Ally Fetterman. Catherine Sanzilio. And Lauren Wildermuth. And I would just like to point out that none of these ladies are seniors, so they'll be back next year. Annie's a senior. I met our 200-meter team. Yes, Annie's a senior.
(inaudible).
And my last bit of truly outstanding news, and really epitomizes what we hope to have all our interscholastic athletics teams really make our priority. Winning on the field is outstanding, but winning in the classroom is even better, and when you do it together, there's nothing better. We just completed our final reporting to the New York State Public High School Athletic Association office, and I'm absolutely thrilled to announce that each and every single one of our 11 fall sports programs earned the distinction of being New York State Scholar-Athlete Teams. Outstanding accomplishment. That's 11 programs, all with an average of over 90, so truly a remarkable, remarkable feat. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keys. Ladies and gentlemen, also, I know there's several parents in the room, and possibly grandparents, and people that support all of our athletes, but especially those here tonight. We have to really say thank you for providing us with the individuals that keep the reputation of Bethlehem Central very strong, and for the support that you provide day in and day out. So, thank you for everything that you do for them. Thank you. As I said, I'd keep mine short, so in the interest of moving forward with some of our presentations, that would be my report for this first meeting in December, as we head into the next meeting, which will feature a lab school presentation as well as two public hearings. So, if you're a PIG student, tonight was a good night to come.
Thank you, Dr. Douglas. And on behalf of the entire board, congratulations to all the student athletes. Next up is the Board of Education report. I don't have anything to report. We had Thanksgiving holiday, it seems like, since the last board meeting, but...
Theater Without a Net is performing their Shakespeare production of The Tempest this weekend and next weekend, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Hi, so, speaking of sports, I know the winter seasons are underway, which all the athletes a healthy and productive season, and congratulations to all new athletes who made their first team. And I did go to the character lunch at the middle school today. Forty-two students, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders were honored for their demonstration of the characteristics of curiosity, honesty, and self-regulation. I want to thank Mr. Zadorian, Mr. Warford, and Mr. Klugman, and all their staff members for recognizing student achievement in those areas. Oh, and in terms, that event was held in the pit, and I know we saw a schematic of what that's supposed to look like after the bond, I believe. Can I ask if perhaps the next construction update, we get, I can't remember what it looks like, but I saw it today.
Well, that piece for the entrance into the pit is part of the project, but it's an alternate for the project, so it's something that we have to wait on. But in general, the overall condition is something that we may need to address in the coming year.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
All right. Next, we have a couple of presentations. It deals with the conservation easement that the town has passed. The town itself will be doing a presentation, Mr. Bob Leslie, and then after that, Ms. Judith Kehoe will be doing a presentation and the impact that any potential approval of the easement would have on the school district.
Of course, we just had a technical issue.
Oops.
It just went out all of a sudden.
Well, thank you, Dr. Douglas and the Board of Education, for having us here tonight. I'm John Clarkson, the town supervisor, and I have with me Rob Leslie, our Director of Economic Development and Planning. We do, we have an idea. We're going to give a presentation to you here tonight, barring technical difficulties, and it's on our conservation easement, as you know. We'd also like to address any questions that you and the board might have, and we have, of course, been in consultation with your CFO and our former town controller, Judy Kehoe, so we'll address some of the issues we talked about as well. Well, I'm going to start out, and I'm going to give you the big picture about our conservation easement program. We'll take over the slides from here, I guess. It's a brand-new program. It was just authorized in law by state action this spring, and the town board passed a local law this August. So, it's a brand-new exemption program, and I know, I understand you're looking at a veterans' exemption program, too, and I'm sure Judy will say, and I want to emphasize right out, a tax exemption is not about how much money the schools get. You are going to decide what you're going to get through your tax levy, which is based on what you need. A tax exemption doesn't reduce overall that amount, it does change the distribution of who pays for it. If someone gets an exemption out there, whether for being a veteran, or, you know, something else, the rest of us pick it up, and that's understood. But I wouldn't want anyone to think, watching this, oh, good heavens, that means our schools might get less revenues, because that won't be the case. It's simply about who pays it. So, for the big picture, we have this new exemption available, and we see it as a great new tool to help us to preserve open space. Rob will go through some of our survey research, but we believe that our residents, your residents and parents, very much support this. They want to preserve open space. Now, we can't preserve it all, but we'd like to do everything we can, and the town of Bethlehem has its philosophy for land use and development is, we're going to have more development, we want to see it. In particular, we want to grow the commercial tax base to make all of our taxes easier to pay, but we also want to preserve the town's character as much as possible, and this will help us do it. It's an exemption, as I said, that was just authorized by the legislature. It's only available in a few towns. Bethlehem is one of three towns statewide that can do this, having received special authorization this year. And what it does is allows us, in very limited circumstances, when an owner of a large piece of property comes to us, to accept from them a conservation easement, which means they cannot, will not, are legally prohibited from developing their property, and in that case, they get a partial exemption for it. It ranges from 50% to 90%, depending on how many years they want to provide that. Yeah, why don't we go show that on the next slide? So, if the landowner preserves their land, and that is their promising, signing a legal recorded document, they're not going to develop it for 15 to 29 years, they can get a 50% exemption. If it's from 30 to 49 years, they'll get a 75% exemption, and if it's from 50 to 75 years, 85% perpetual, forever, it will be a 90% exemption. Now, this exemption already applies by virtue of the state legislation, what the town did to municipal and to fire district taxes. We have approached not only Bethlehem Central, but the other three school districts that have places, that have space within the town, and we have approached Albany County. Both you, the school districts, and Albany County has the choice. You can either opt into this exemption or not, and we, the town, are asking you to opt in, because obviously, it will be much more effective if your taxes are abated as well for the exemption. In fact, if you look at the overall share of taxes, I mean, obviously, school taxes, and this is not a bad thing, it just has to do with the way it works in our tax base, are the largest share of the tax burden, followed by the county, the town, and the fire district. So, it will be much more powerful if you opt into it. And we have a number of people who are thinking about it now, who have approached us, not a huge number, but everyone who's thinking about it now is saying, well, we might do this, but we're really waiting to see if the school districts, it depends on which district their property is in, and/or the county opts in, because obviously, if this is a financial incentive to not develop, it'll be more powerful if you are on board and if Albany County is on board. And the Albany County Executive, Dan McCoy, has supported adoption of it, so we're hopeful there, but your process is actually on track faster. The other thing I should specify, this is very different from most property tax exemptions. Most property tax exemptions you get because of who you are, what you've done. If you're a veteran, obviously, or if you've served in a foreign war, you are entitled to certain veterans exemptions. If you are a resident homeowner, you get the state-funded STAR exemption. If you meet certain income and age requirements, you get the senior STAR exemption. This exemption's very different. You have to own a piece of land that has a value for open space, it has to be five acres or more, and that's not including your household. This exemption does not apply to houses or to structures, it's only to open land. And if you have that open land, then, if you are willing to conserve it, you can get the exemption. You can't simply go up to the assessor's office and say, I'd like this exemption. What you have to do is apply for it to a board, and we established a special conservation easement review board, and then following that, the town board has to approve it, and we have to hold a hearing, a town board hearing, for each and every exemption that is offered. So, it's not the sort of thing where someone just applies and checks off. Where we have seen this exemption in the two other towns that have it, the numbers of exemptions that have been offered are fairly low. I think in...
The town of Elma, out near Erie County, has three properties on board. They're just getting their program implemented. Orchard Park, also out in Erie County, has had the program for some time. They recently got the legislation, I believe, in 2009, 2010, but we're offering such a program outside of the state legislation for, I'd say, maybe about 10 or 15 years. So, they've had more time for properties to participate. They probably have about 75 to 100 properties that are participating, but again, they've had more time for those landowners to consider it and opt in into the program. Both the county, both Erie County and the school districts of those municipalities have opted into the program and are issuing the exemption.
So, in Elma, it was two or three, and in Orchard Park, a far bigger town, it needs to be pointed out.
It's about 75 to 100.
75 to 100. So, we're not talking about huge numbers here, and each one is considered individually, each one has to have open space value, but actually, we think the biggest threshold for people choosing whether or not they want to do this... the biggest threshold for people choosing whether or not they want to do this is if they're willing to not develop their land. It's not, you know, we get this exemption. We have to offer the town something in exchange for that. And for the town and the citizens, frankly, it's helping to forestall, put off, prevent development in areas that are valued for open space. We don't think this is going to stop any commercial development, anything that's currently under plans. That will not be its impact. But for some of the former farm families, other owners of large plots of land who are not planning to develop or who might take this incentive as a way not to develop, we believe it will change behavior. And that makes it very different, and we think a very powerful tool. You know, if we were to buy all the land that we thought might be available to, to not be developed, well, we couldn't do it. Even, even small plots of land can have tremendously high values. And while the town certainly wants to consider all the tools that we can use, this is simply a much more affordable way to do it. And since it's vacant land, and in large parts, it's in the rural parts of town, it's usually not of the highest value. So therefore, the exemption, when applied, doesn't cost that much. We've sort of, I always talk free-form and don't quite follow the presentation, but I think we've kind of gone through the procedures. You have to apply. You have to first be vetted by a conservation easement review board. If they find it's in the interest, it goes to the town board. We have to schedule and hold a public hearing for each exemption. And after that process, we will prove it. But again, all of this is after the landowner has signed a legal easement, a recorded deed, and recorded it with the county. Then and only then do they get the exemption. Who do we have next?
John, John, before you go on to the next slide, I do have a question. The second bullet, it says the town may negotiate terms and conditions of the offer. I guess I would like to know, the terms, aren't the terms the, the percentages, or are they subject to change?
The terms for how much you would get as an exemption are, are yes, just that, the percentage is shown there. But the conservation easement review board may negotiate other things. For example, on certain plots, they could say, we'd like to have public access here. Or if someone came to them where there had been an issue with ATV use or dirt biking, which has happened in a few parcels of land, the conservation easement review board might well say, well, sure, we'll give you a conservation easement, but only in the case where you will also agree not to allow dirt biking here, because that has been a problem to the neighbors. We didn't want any property to benefit from this if there were an issue of controversy that, that was causing other neighbors a lack of enjoyment of their properties. And so we left room for all of that to take place. We don't know how much of it will, but they kind of have an open book to put on special requirements, if needed, for any special reasons. And that kind of highlights the point how each one of these is more or less an individual agreement with two boards' review. It won't be your board, of course, but there will be two boards before the town.
And if I can just add, another example of that would be if you had a, if you had an agricultural property, their main goal would be to, John, blocking the screen. Their main board, their main, main purpose for these would be to maintain the land in agriculture. If they were to, to continue that, potentially, a condition would be to allow the addition of a barn structure or some other type of improvement that would allow the agricultural business to continue. So you wouldn't want somebody to see a barn structure go up and feel that the ag owner was in violation of the, of the conservation easement, because they're trying to continue the ag business. So types of conditions like that, in order to allow the open space to remain open space, in the instance of ag land, improvements would be, would be allowed to keep the ag business going.
I have some questions on the same, same bullet. Proposal would be of benefit to the town. Can you give me further examples of what you would consider a benefit to the town, and what wouldn't be a benefit to the town?
Sure, sure. So a benefit of, of land that is perhaps in the direct path of development. So if there's water and sewer directly in front of the property, and it's, it's going to come up for development, and the landowner says, it's either I sell the property for development for 100 homes or 200 homes, or I need, need to have a way to, to help maintain the property, and lowering the, the assessment of the property by agreeing to a 15, 50, 75-year conservation easement agreement, that's their way to, to keep it in open space. Another example would be if the property is located next to a town park or another area of open space that is already protected, we would be receiving more land or seeing more land preserved in open space. So it's, it's suitable, the, the open space protected includes land that could be developed, but also includes lands of, of slopes or, or areas that are, provide wildlife habitat and other areas of importance to the community. I think everyone likes to enjoy driving around town, enjoying the quality of life that the open space provides. You drive down Meads Lane or Waldemire Road, and you see the, the farm properties. Assistance to these property owners to help them maintain the land, keep it in open space is what this, what this tool would essentially do.
And we consider very broadly, I mean, we consider all open space to be of some value, though.
Okay, that's where I was going with it.
People like the, the atmosphere. So we're not going to have a super-high threshold, but each property under the law must be considered individually. And both for positive and negative reasons, we may want to provide special conditions and allowances. If a farmer's planning to build a barn...
Pick up the penalties.
The penalties. I'll let Rob do that.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, so on the penalties, this is directly from the state, state legislation. Essentially, if, if a property owner violates any terms or conditions of the agreement, let's say they, they, they take down all the trees, and, and they weren't supposed to do that, and, you know, the town obviously sees that that's going on, we will certainly, can certainly implement the penalties for repayment of, of the abated taxes. So essentially, all taxes abated pursuant to the conservation easement agreement to the town, county, special, special districts, and, and the school districts. Repayment is basically based on, equal to five times the taxes saved in the last year, in which the land benefited from a, from an exemption, plus interest of 6 percent per year compounded annually for each year in which an exemption was granted, not exceeding five years. And this is basically, as I mentioned, straight from the state legislation, but is also the same penalty for properties receiving an ag assessment. If they violate the agreement of the ag assessment, they, they also follow the same, same penalty formula.
But it seems, it seems like if you, let's say you chose to perpetuity, you know, to, and so that in 30 years past, then you decide to sell your property, you're only going to get penalized. You've had that 90 percent savings for all that time, and you're only going to be penalized, you know, the five years plus the interest on that. So it would seem, I mean, I would think if I had land, you know, I would...
Looking at the formula, you could envision a way where someone might game it. Let me give you two reasons why that wouldn't happen. One, the penalty applies if you violate the terms of the easement and development. But keep in mind, this is already a recorded easement on the deed. You cannot develop legally. It might happen if a landowner does it themselves, but if a landowner is selling to someone else to develop, they're going to do their title research. They're going to say, wait, you have a provision here that says you can't develop this for 15 years, or whatever it is. And so they won't be able to. Really, technically, they'll have to come back to the conservation easement review board, who will then say, all right, we'll let you out of this, but you must pay the penalty. The other thing is, you mentioned perpetuity. We, we really expect, anyone who's interested in doing a perpetual conservation easement probably won't use this program, because they can do that now. If they have a valuable piece of open-spaced land, they usually, and they want to donate it, it usually goes to the Mohawk Hudson Land Conservancy or somewhere else. And then, they don't even have to worry, frankly, if the county or the school district opts into this. It's, it's tax-exempt when it goes to a not-for-profit. So that, that mechanism already exists. This is more for people who are probably not planning to develop for some period of time, but will eventually, will eventually. We have also heard from the other jurisdictions that have this, was it never, or we just, no one could really think of any situations where it had been broken, violations?
Right. Speaking of the other, the other municipalities, they, they had no one violating the, the agreement, and those owners continue to have the, whether it's a 15, or 20, or 35-year agreement. They have not instituted the penalty, because no one's violated the agreement.
And to our knowledge, known as, we have a very rich agricultural exemption, which is also under state law. And again, in Bethlehem, at least, no one has ever violated it. The landowners are aware of it. They respect the agreement. So what I can see, you know, in theory, you might think of it, it has not happened. Yes.
I have a question. The limitation on the development follow, stays with the property even if it's sold? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So a new owner cannot develop even if he or she wants to, because the easement was signed by the previous owner?
Correct.
It's filed with the county and recorded with the deed.
I'm sorry?
It's filed with the county, it's filed with the county and recorded with the deed, so it runs with the land for the term of the, of the agreement.
So, so the easement can be sold, then? It goes with the deed, you're saying?
It goes with the sale of the land.
Properties can be transferred?
Yes.
Correct.
But the limit stays?
Correct.
And there are, honestly, there are, there are not many of them, but conservation easements can exist outside of this program. I believe we've only have two in town, and the same thing applies to them. This is a specific program that basically was enacted to give local governments, towns specifically, a legal way to provide a tax incentive to encourage open space preservation. And we're very grateful to have it, because, as you know, we reassessed recently. And while we followed all the rules according to HOIL, and, and everything was assessed at value, it had, for some people, the unfortunate effect of, you know, their property had not been properly valued in the past. And this was true of much commercial property and very much of the vacant land, too. So while it went way up, and the owners came to us, we looked at it, we talked, the consultants, well, you know, the law is the law, this is the value. There is no way for the town board to say, we want to tax this at a lower level. We just can't do that. However, with this program, with a conservation easement, we can. And it's the sole legal way that we're aware of, really, to do this. Why don't we?
So, if I may, when you said through the reevaluation assessment that the landowner's values went up, but isn't it true everybody's land value through the reassessment pretty much went to a higher value, because they placed a higher value on land price throughout the reassessment?
The reassessment did, did look at land, really, for the first time through its entirety, though Bethlehem had reassessed before. And we looked back, we found that in very many ways, things had been skipped. And one of them was the land value. My house, I think, had a land value of $10,000. If my house burns down, that lot's, you know, worth $100,000. So it was adjusted to be rational and properly done.
So that, that meant it was reassessed for everyone, to bring everybody on a fair-market value for their land?
Everyone, although it's kind of complicated, because the land value assessment, it's as-of-used. So if you're using it for agriculture, it's valued for agriculture. If you're just using it as a big, open farmland with one house on it, it's valued as, as though it were a big, you had a big yard. If you're using it for commercial land, it's valued as that. So the use that it's in is valued. When you sell the land for development, and this is something that I want you all to understand, it always sells for a lot more. You know, a parcel that's assessed at $200,000 can sell for several million easily. And that's usually what happens, because the developer looks at the potential for it, if it's subdivided, if you put a bunch of houses on it. And that's a whole different value class. That's why, for us, the town, earlier I said, we look at areas we'd like to preserve, and, and we look at what the real price of that would be. And no matter how much we'd like to, we're not going to be able to afford it. This program, for those landowners who are willing and in a position to do it, allows us to provide, and you, hopefully, an incentive that doesn't cost anywhere near that amount, but may encourage some people and help them to keep them. There are many farm families who've had land for a tremendously long amount of time, who perhaps weren't planning to sell immediately, or even for a longer period of time. And for them, we, the town board, recognize that there were difficulties caused by the reassessment. We certainly, you know, we couldn't do anything properly that would have changed the valuation method, but that doesn't mean we're immune to, okay, we can understand this is putting pressure on you. And this program would be a way for those willing and in a condition to do so, who are not planning to do anything with their land for at least 15 years, to get some tax relief. So in that regard, I do want to make this point, and I don't want to run too long, but the reassessment, like an exemption, it doesn't affect how much money the town, or the school district, or the county gets. It's only the distribution. But the reassessment helped most of the homeowners in town, and in particular, in Bethlehem Central. We have some statistics on, on that last bullet up there that I want to emphasize to you. And this is just for the portion of Bethlehem Central, which is in the town of Bethlehem, which is, of course, the vast majority of your district, but it doesn't include the Clarksville piece. Within that area, there are 7,162 STAR recipients. And that means they're homeowners, they live there, it's their primary home. So they're, you know, they're the same people who, whose families have gone through your schools, et cetera. And of that group, 68 percent had lower property taxes, school and library, year to year. Now, you had a modest levy, levy increase of 2.99 percent, I think. But they actually had lower dollar taxes. Now, that's largely because of the commercial sector taking on a greater share of the burden, we feel appropriately. But it's, it's also because, partly because of these vacant lands, which went up in value, much smaller than the commercial impact. So one of the points we're going to make, because you are going to properly worry as a board, well, what effect will this have on our taxpayers? You know, if we're going to, if we're going to opt into this exemption or the veterans exemption, that means other taxpayers are going to pay more, and that's true. So what I would point out is the majority, the vast majority of your property taxpayers, and particularly of the homeowners, had lower taxes, tremendously helped. And, you know, it was like $200, $100. It was a, a significant amount lower. And that relationship was even stronger for the senior STAR recipients. That's over 65 in their income qualifications as well. So we really helped quote the average taxpayer here. That wasn't necessarily true if you own vacant land, and we feel that the commercial sector is, is now more appropriately valued. But if you're looking at, okay, so this might mean that some of those regular taxpayers would have to pay a little more. And we've said, even under the most extreme cases, that's probably only, how much? $7 on an average, if every eligible property gets a 50 percent exemption. And personally, I'll tell you, that will never happen. So your homeowners have generally gotten much, much bigger reductions this year, which is good. And so what you'd be asking is, if we want to help preserve this open space, do you think they'd be okay with paying a little bit more on that? And we did present some statistics on that. Where is it, Rob? It's Conservation Goals. When Bethlehem did its comprehensive plan in 2005, a lot of interaction with the public took place. There were surveys, there was outreach, there were focus groups and everything. And we did a comprehensive survey, and 73 percent of respondents agreed that the town should buy land or purchase conservation easements to preserve open space and to, and undeveloped land. So we can do that now. We could always do that. But what I've been telling you, and what the conversation we've been having internally is, great, we can do that, but where's the money come from? You know, in some communities downstate in Long Island, they've done bonds to do it. They've had special property taxes to do that. Honestly, I don't see that, that happening in Bethlehem, just because of the magnitude of the expenditures. And I don't think we'd be able to do that. But giving up a little bit of value so that we could help preserve it is a whole nother thing. And I understand there were some questions, because some of these percentages, if you look at them just what they are, 49.7, 51 percent, you say, well, that's close. But Rob went back to the original survey language, and perhaps we should have included all up here, but it really wasn't saying, do you approve of this or not? The respondents were given a series of different things. Would you do this? Would you do this? And for that first one, I don't know if you have the precise language.
Yeah, so basically, that first one, the, for the, I'm sorry, the second bullet, the 49 percent, respondents were asked, how would you, how, what types of mechanisms do you feel the town should pursue in, in financing conservation of open space? 49 percent stated, as you see here, they were in favor of lowering tax assessments. This was a multiple selection question, so they had multiple opportunities to select various, various financing mechanisms. I think most importantly, I want to point out is, there was an option for, public funds should not be used for financing open space. Only 17 percent, 17 percent of respondents indicated that was their, that was one of their, one of their choices. Other choices included the town applying to state and federal funds, so applying for grant funds, which we consistently take a look at, and, and if we have a willing landowner, you know, consider applying for. But also, taking a look at the town budget and using the general fund to purchase, purchase open space. The 49 percent was the second on that scale of, what type of mechanism would you want to see for, for purchasing, protecting open space? I think when asked for applying for funds, applying for federal, state funds, that's going to be the logical choice that anyone is going, going to choose. So we feel strongly that, that there is a, a strong support for, for conserving open space from the comprehensive plan. Furthermore, the fourth bullet here, where it says 51 percent of respondents were willing to pay for conservation of open space if they saw an increase in, in, in their taxes. Here, the question was raised to the, to the, to the respondent, or to the survey, to the respondent, if the town was to increase taxes to address all the items that, that have come out of the comprehensive plan, such as improving roads, taking a look at, you know, infrastructure, purchasing parkland, in this case, paying for conservation of open space, 51 percent said we would be willing to pay for the conservation of open, open-spaced lands if it resulted, if it, if it required an increase in taxes. That was the top choice out of, I believe, seven options that they had to choose from. So, so we feel that, that these responses here really give us a good sense of, of the community's indication of, of supporting open space. Furthermore, I just want to add that... Furthermore, I just want to add, the town has had additional committees that have participated, participated in the discussion of, of open space. The Citizens Advisory Committee on Conservation, the Ag and Farmland Committee, all in reports to the town board stated that term conservation easements, which is really what we're looking at here, were something the town board should explore and, and pursue. Most recently in 2013, the town went through a comprehensive plan assessment of the, of the comprehensive plan. So what you're seeing here is 2005, information from 2005. In 2013, we said, "Let's take a look at the comprehensive plan since it's been eight years since we adopted it. Are there, are these still, are the goals and objectives and the recommendations still valid?" So we had a committee of, I'd say 15 members of the community, residents, large landowners, business owners, organizations in town, meet on, on a monthly basis to discuss the comprehensive plan and whether or not the goals, recommendations are still, still relevant. And recommendation that came out of that report to the town board also included pursuing the term conservation easement program. So we feel strong support based on all the committees, the survey, the comprehensive plan is, is really showed for, for the, for the easement program.
Can you tell us how many responded to the 2005 survey?
So this was, it was a survey that sent out a random, random sample to town residents. 1700, 1700 surveys went out and we received, I believe, I think 600, 600 back, about a 40, I have the number here, but a, close to 40% response rate.
We'll get you background on that as well as the phrasing of the questions so you can see them yourself, but I think someone said, "Could we update that?" And the truth is, I think that's going to be no because it's, survey research is tremendously expensive and it's getting harder and harder to do as fewer people read their mail or answer their phone. It's just the tools are, are changing, but we'll get you the complete information on that. I want to, before we're finished, go through, you know, how it works and sort of, so you can see where they are. I'm sorry, another question, yes?
On the 73% and the 51%, I know you said you're going to get additional information, but I, I would also want to know if the same number of responses were for question number one or four, I don't know what number question they were on the survey. You said you received 600 back, but how many actually responded to each individual question?
In other words, do you by any chance have the survey and the survey breakdown that can be sent to me?
We have, we have the questions and all that.
If you can send that to me, I'll disseminate it to the board so they can look over it and also see your demographic breakdown of it.
Also, I've questioned, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing page two, if close 50% of the respondents were in favor of lowering the tax assessments, why did you allow that, you know, large increase this past year with the revale? I understand that the land was worth a lot more than the, than the landowners were being taxed on.
Well, that's the reason, that's, that's the reason.
But if this was the goal to help them, it seems like, you know, what was here and what was responded to in the survey is contrary to what?
There's an answer and it's very clear. We followed the law, we did a proper ethical professional reassessment. Lynn, we're good friends, I really like you, but I wouldn't go to the assessor and say, "Hey, can you cut her a deal and not tax her house at what it's worth," right? So it's the same thing. When the landowners came to us, many of the board members were, you know, we, we looked into any possible legal, could we phase this in? Is there any other standard that would apply? But we did not find that answers are. When you impose your taxes, the same thing applies. Everything you do is under state law. So, you know, this is Bethlehem, we tend to do things properly and according to Hoyle and given the knowledge and, and having reviewed the data and found it was a proper value, was kind of an unavoidable consequence. We did redouble our efforts during that period to see if there was anything we could do and while I would say this conservation easement is primarily about preserving open space, it was in that environment. So we went to our state legislators, Senator Breslin and Assemblywoman Fahy, we found this legislation, we wrote the bill for them, we worked it every way we could to get it passed and we did get it passed. So this was really the only legal way we could have find to address it for those people it will fit and I will be quite frank, it's not going to address everyone's problems or needs, it's not intended to. This is only for people who have the proper, you know, quantity of open space land and are willing to do it, but it wasn't, it wasn't something at our discretion in a proper way to not have happened.
One of the questions Supervisor Clarkson is, when you wrote the bill and asked for, I think it was Senator Breslin and Assemblywoman Fahy, at that time, the town was requesting it, but did anybody give any consideration of asking the school board because we're the largest taxing authority, whether or not we were behind it at that point? Because now it's sort of, it's been passed, now the board has to make the decision and it's sort of either do it or don't and it sort of rests with the board where it could have been potentially presented before.
At the time, we were seeking the legislation, very frankly, it was quite a long shot. I was pleasantly surprised when we got it. We were doing everything we could. It's true, we could have reached out to other jurisdictions. We were mainly reaching out to others who had the exemption. Clifton Park has a program that's kind of quasi-legal. So we asked them about their program and, you know, perhaps you're right, we could have and we should have, but it is, I'm not, though we are asking you to do it, it's, it's fully at your option, you don't have to do it. It's the way this exemption, like many others, work. You have the power to opt in or to not. So rolling back the clock to that time period, I wish I had reached out, but we, we did a lot of outreach and it's, you know, there are a lot of exemptions that are offered, for example, by our IDA where, where you would have a seat at the table at least at looking at the policy and we always try and do value your opinion. And I would say though, the town board, if you opt into this or in any case, we're not going to control each one, we have an independent board which looks at it, but if it should come to a case where, you know, you're displeased with what's happening or you have concerns, by all means, reach out to us, reach out to the Conservation Easement Review Board. You know, on a policy level, these are the type of things we're seeing, but I really don't expect that will happen.
Can I, can I just mention before we leave the stats page? It would be helpful to have some of the line items, but I, there's nothing we can do to, to change the fact that the data is at least nine, if not 10 years old. And it was take, the survey was taken at a different time and many of our residents are facing different situations than they were 10 years ago. And I, I will note that when people were asked, yes, people supported it at 73%, or at least the respondents at 73% level that we should, should buy land, that percentage drops significantly when you ask them, "Would you pay for it?" So I, we just, we cannot get around that, that fact, so.
Wait till we send you, I think when you see the full phrasing, you may take a different opinion on that. Updating, as I said, but I, if it changed in any direction Charmaine, I would expect it went the opposite way because as you has, as you have, have less of a vital commodity like open space, there's been much more development since then, it becomes more valuable and you want all the more to save it. So I would be incredibly surprised if it were to have gone in the other direction.
But John, wouldn't you say that most families are being squeezed tighter since 2008?
Yes, and, and including some former farm families, which you now have the power to help. As we've just said and we'll show you every dollar, we can show you every household how much lower their taxes were this year and I'm, I'm not going to ring any constables here, but the town, it is our responsibility to assess. We had a plan to do so for many, many years. We were, we paid money, we spent about 400 some thousand dollars to do this and got a result that we did because we thought it would be more fair for all our taxpayers. It would be more defensible when we go to court for certiorari and other things. So we have a very good, well-valued tax base now. So now, when the town adds commercial value and there's going to be a lot of it coming, Vista and elsewhere, many apartment buildings and other things, I think over the next four or five years in this town, you're going to see a lot more of the tax base growth in other than single-family residential homes and for the homeowners, that's a good thing. For your taxpayers and parents, I also believe it's a good thing. This is kind of tough because we don't have, we cannot predict the future perfectly or know how many will, people will apply and I've discussed this with Judy Keough, who's an excellent financial person, but I, I will tell you that our view of the maximum amount that this could cost under any circumstances is 4 million. And, and I don't, I would, I would bet my house that that won't happen. If we even get anywhere near to a quarter of that, I would be highly surprised. This is going to be a limited use application that will help us to save a lot of properties that otherwise could potentially go to development and it will help those who are in a condition to benefit from it, which I think might be a good thing to do given the circumstances. We did the right thing in reassessment, but the result was most of the taxpayers, your voters, those people who, yes, are hard pressed, got a big reduction even before the check from the New York State government, which they got.
I don't think we've received it yet.
But John, to be fair, they got a reduction because they were previously paying more than their fair share.
That's right. I mean, I've tried to, to push back on the people who came and we said, "Well, Lynn's question, you know, well, didn't you, you let these people's taxes go up?" But by the same token, for years and years and years, that meant that our homeowners were paying too much and I, and it was a substantial amount. I think I estimated it roughly at being about $3 million every year. So we are charged with assessing fairly and we're all charged with watching our tax margin, which I know you guys do very, work very hard on too, but here we are in 2014 with most of the homeowners getting a reduction, with the businesses going up and, you know, we're, we're concerned about business too and with a group of, I would say in many ways, sympathetic former farm families with large lots, that this would be a way to help them. So I, I think of it in that way too. I do not, to me, this is not, you know, it's not a broad tax relief tool, but for certain people, it would really help.
And if I may, just because you mentioned, if, if I'm correct, you said you could get us the information with the parcels, how much they would save, I would ask the board not to be in receipt of that. I do not believe if you make a decision, you should know who's a benefit and to what level because I think that could position you in different positions in the community if that was considered. It's just as a precaution so that it's made, not, it's sort of like what you said, it's not necessarily about the benefit of the landowners or the ag owners, we have to look at the benefit of the entire, the entire Bethlehem Central community regardless of whether they're agriculture, landowner or just property owners.
Absolutely. Well, in that case, don't focus too closely on this charter, you might recognize your neighbor's property. It's, it would be hard to do at this distance.
I do know where the National Grid plot is up there.
And Rob will tell you all about that another day. By the way, we will, the town board hearing is still open, as you know, we also have information on our website on the National Grid issue and there will be a hearing conclusion sometime in January, we just don't have the date yet. Back to this, why don't, Rob, if you could just take them quickly without naming any names, what kind of problem?
This is just, we wanted to take a look at, you know, in order to find out what the, the reduction assessed value, we, we sent our data over to Judy to get a sense of what parcels are eligible. We come to find that 119 parcels are eligible and this is based on a, basically a query of, show me all the parcels in town that are five acres or more, that are in agricultural use based on the real properties tax code classification. Agricultural use are vacant or are residential properties of 10 acres or more. So you may have a 30 acre property with a house on it, that particular property could, could be eligible for this type of program. So this, this map here represents those properties that, that are, are eligible. And as Josh mentioned, we don't, while we don't anticipate all properties participating, we wanted at least to take a look at what is the available universe of potential, potential property. So that's what this, this shows here. So it would represent, if all properties participated, it would represent 3,900 acres of, of open space protection.
One of the questions I have, Rob, is in the legislation or in the rules, these are individual properties that somebody owns and so forth. Can a conglomerate of properties in a set area combine their, combine their properties and say, "Except for our house and our buildable space, we want all of this put into open space."
Yes, we have, we have allowed.
So it could affect groups of properties that are not entitled or labeled up here?
It could, it could, it could. We did allow that, that property, adjacent properties could, could join together to, to participate. Now, we haven't gone through that, that full analysis, that would be an extensive.
Well, you just don't know what that is.
You just don't know, but, but we got to understand, under that, that option, you know, both property owners are going to be at the mercy of the other if, if one is to violate.
Yeah, you got to like your neighbor.
Exactly, exactly. You got to like your neighbor. So the likelihood of that happening, I mean, certainly it could, but, but you're basically putting all your, your trust in one owner and your, your neighbor not to violate because if he does, you will.
Yeah, no problem.
Is this map just the Bethlehem Central School District, so it does not include any Gilderlin potential or Ravina Creams?
Correct, this map is just showing you the, the properties associated with the school district.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Carrie Austin brought a bottom line there that one, is that the water line or the transmission line?
Yeah, the, the bottom line is, the bottom line, the dark black.
Well, no, I'm talking about that white one that goes through a lot of that property.
Oh, those are, those are.
Power lines?
National Grid right-of-way lines.
Oh, okay.
So those are power lines, the large, the larger power lines.
Have you got a sense from Gilderlin and Ravina Creams, Selkirk, whether they would be in favor of it?
No, we, we went actually to RCS first because they have more properties than you do and as you know, they called you immediately and said, "Well, what are you guys doing?" We, we have, I think, sent Gilderlin a letter, but there are so few properties up there, it just really doesn't matter. The county is busy with their budget and deciding, you know, whether they're going to have elections or not, but they have it on their agenda and we hope that they'll be considering it before the end of the year. I should mention too, we asked you for the end of the year, Tom, you and I talked and we know that might be impractical given the schedule, we just know there are people thinking of it now and that's sort of their threshold question. If the school district of the county is in, then maybe I'm in because it, as an incentive, it's just very different if you are or are not in. But this, this just shows Bethlehem and I'm, yeah, I think we kind of went through a lot of this already. Let me give you a kind of my concluding spiel and then we'll see if there are any other questions. The primary goal of our comprehensive plan of the town is to protect open space, that's one of the primary goals where we can. As we say, we want to promote development where we can, we want diverse housing options available and we particularly want to grow the commercial tax base where we can without upsetting our quality of life, but by and large, we'd like to keep that quality in the open space. So that's a primary goal, this will help us do it. This conservation easement will help us slow development, we feel, if it's, if it's fully used and you'll have a big part in that, but it's only, it's not an as of right, it's only for those owners that say, "Yes, I am willing to not develop." The taxpayers receive something for this, your citizens as well as ours, they're not just giving away an exemption, in return, they're getting less development, which a lot of people want. I must tell you and, and Rob can tell you even better, as the group that legally must oversee development, it's very rare that someone comes, "Oh, yeah, I would love to see that field turned into a field of housing and yes, I want this new building or this new apartment." That just doesn't happen. Most people in town would rather keep things exactly like they are, which you and I know is not, not going to happen, but generally, that's the push from the public. This is a tool that will help us do some of that in an affordable way. It helps though housing development and vacant lands, which would primarily be single-family housing and, you know, you have your own philosophy on this and your own, you know, pupil growth and decline numbers, but by and large, all the numbers show you that for every single-family house that's built, we lose money. Far less comes in in tax revenues than goes out in service costs and, but I'm, I'm not going to strike that too hard because we're going to have growth no matter what, but I do think that from a financial perspective, this can save a lot overall when we look at county, town, fire, district and all three school district taxes. As I've said, and I don't want to end this, it's a good time to consider targeted tax exemptions. I know you're feeling, "Well, we've got the veterans exemption, we got this, it's all..." But in a way, it's a good time. It's, it's coming just as most of the homeowners has had some relief. True, not everyone, true, some people have had increases, but by and large, people in town are getting actually lower taxes in dollars this year. And I must tell you, the town board, we just decided this was the year to really take a big step in eliminating front footage tax. I'm not going to go through that whole, an obscure way of charging for sewer, not on the value, but on how many feet you have on the front of the road, some properties may have some done. It's an inequity, it's an anachronism, but it's hard to get rid of because if you lower it, if you change it, then other people's taxes go up. But we looked at the dynamics this year and we said, "Well, a lot of people, almost everyone, the homeowners are going down, so it's time to reform and fix things while we can." It's time because the tax base is growing, it's time because reassessment was very helpful to homeowners as a class and, and I think over the next five to 10 years, it's very much time because we're concerned about growth, residential growth. We're still going to get it, our goal is to make sure it's good, but I know that we're going to have more commercial tax base. The buildings that are Vista right now, though, many of them receive abatements, we get more each year from those and the new retail that went in, there was no IDA tax abatement. So, you know, there's a lot of development coming there, there's some new developments along New Scotland Road and that Hamlet corridor, there are several, I'm going to forget them all, are there other ones we should mention?
We've got the new CVS coming up on.
CVS on 9W, more in that plaza. There's growth in the tax base coming and that's, that's our goal is to work for more of that. So I don't know what else, bring up the band, the strings, whatever, but we really hope you'll, you'll give this strong consideration and we, and it is your choice. We respect that and we, we expect you to seek all the opinions and views and look at the numbers, but I, we don't think this will be any kind of a big hit on the other taxpayers and we do believe they support it, but you'll, you'll have your own hearing and see how that goes. So, yes.
I still do have an, if, I mean, looking at this, there's some really large plots, could someone decide that I'm only going to put half my property into an easement?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, okay. All right. So, as long as it's a minimum of five, then that they could subdivide it up?
And that might be reasonably done. Some people want to keep, that has happened in some of our existing easements. They keep their house and the portion they farm.
Right.
But one of the other things, and the reason why these numbers aren't very high, we feel, is because all of this land is undeveloped, and in some cases, it's, it's unbuildable, too. And in the case of the agricultural properties, if they're already getting an agricultural exemption, the people at the state office of real property say, that's giving them about 85% reduction in their value already. So, this only applies after this. So, you take some agricultural land, you reduce its, its, its value by 85%, and then this applies. It's really getting to be a fraction of a fraction. Still, we feel it will be helpful to let people keep their lands when they can, even for those with an agricultural exemption. This will provide them sort of a safe harbor. They may get tired of farming, they may not be able to meet the $10,000 minimum annual sales requirement that applies. A lot of people tell us it's difficult to keep that ag exemption, so this provides another way to do that. And I, I think you should make the decision and stick with it, but honestly, if there, if it turned out that this was not a program over the, the path of time that you liked, all you have to do is pass a resolution. For the towns and the county, it's a local law, but, you know, it's, it's not a forever decision, and I really don't think it'd be anywhere near those numbers.
So, are you saying the board could potentially pass it, and then at a later date, rescind it?
Yeah, although I think you'd be locked in for any exemptions that have been passed for up to that point.
Okay, yeah, I was going to say, it'd be hard to take it if someone made that decision based on-
You have no idea how many lawyers this thing hired. We quizzed the, the state taxation finance, our own town attorneys, and lots of others, but we want to do the right thing for the taxpayers. You're doing the right thing by considering it, and I thank you for hearing us out. And we will get you the additional information. If you have any questions, call me, call Rob, and we'll, we'll get you additional information.
Anyone else have any questions for John or Bob?
I just have one question. As far as, like, with all this, are these numbers all cut in stone? It has to be five acres? It couldn't be 10? It's, this is what it is?
This is what the town board, yeah.
This is what the town board intended they want passed, yeah. And it, it could be more. I mean, the conservation easement review board could get application, well, okay, it's five hours and acres and it's vacant, but, you know, it could be less significantly. Most of all, we expect landowners to be the limiting factor on this. They're going to think very carefully about giving their rights to develop up, even for a period of, of limited in time, and many of them will not want to, and we understand that. But for those who do, we see it as a great tool and a win-win for those, those taxpayers, those landowners in the town.
And back to the penalty, that's in the law? It's specific to-
That's in the state law.
Because that does seem, I mean, if you were going to even do the 25 years, you could say, I'll do perpetual, and you're going to save, you know, 90% for 15, 15, for 20 years, you know?
It hasn't happened elsewhere. We think it's unlikely, because if you were, if your motivation was that, you'd also have to worry about, well, I may decide to sell, and no buyers will touch it, because it's mired, it's got a rest, deed restriction, and the conservation board, if someone were truly that cynical and were trying to game it, could say, no, we won't undo your easement. You're stuck with it. I mean, but we have found, this hasn't happened-
You guys have the right to not, I mean, suppose someone come to the easement and then said, no, I want to rescind it 15 years later, and I'm just going to pay the five-year penalty?
They would still have the, the recorded easement on their deed, so if they were selling it to violate it, they really couldn't. If they owned the land and decided they wanted to put in a swimming pool and build a new house on the back 40, and that violated, that they, they'd probably get caught, and we'd be taking the money back, but no one is going to buy it.
But once they paid the penalty, isn't, wouldn't the easement be, be gone at that point?
I'm not sure I got it, Matt. The-
At that, if they violated it and they paid the penalty for violating it, wouldn't the easement then be gone?
Not unless the concert, not unless it was rescinded by the board.
The town has an agreement to rescind the easement.
And we just haven't heard that it's a problem in other communities that do this. Probably, when, when people do develop their land, usually, and these include former farm families, usually they're selling it to a developer, they're subdividing it. These things can happen when there's a recorded easement on it. Really, the only way to violate it would be, I, I said I'd keep this vacant, and now I'm going to put something on it. And that would be with a single land, you know, that, we don't think it's going to happen. That, that's the reason why we included, one of the reasons we included the allowance for special provisions to be made, because many of the farmers said, well, I'm farming this land, I might, you know, choose a different crop and need to put up a stable or something else. So, for people in that situation, probably, they would go to the conservation easement review board and say, give us an exception for farm equipment or, or structures, and that's the type of thing we wanted to allow happen. The agricultural exemption program allows for the same sort of things.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? All right. Okay, now we'll hear from Judy. Thank you.
You said 10 minutes for Judy?
We always say that to everybody.
Hey, I just want to give you a quick recap of additional nuances that relate to the school district. It primarily will only affect those parcels within the Bethlehem Central School District that are within the town of Bethlehem. New Scotland, because they are not part of the town, do not have the ability to apply for these exemptions. However, because of how the tax rates are calculated, there is a slight impact to them potentially. If the assessment values get lowered for the town of Bethlehem, that means a slightly larger percentage of the tax levy could be paid by residents within New Scotland. So, a small disclosure on what that impact might be. As Mr. Clarkson had stated, there is no impact to the school district in terms of the total money that we would be able to collect with the levy that's set within the budget. There are no impacts to us with the tax cap calculations. It is purely shifting how the taxes are split between the taxpayers within the district. And that's similar to what we talked about at the last meeting with the veterans exemption. Star impacts are slightly different for the conservation easement as well. Because the star benefit is for residential properties, the conservation exemption is for undeveloped land. So, it's for this mutually exclusive grouping, so therefore, the star should not be impacted at all relative to this conservation easement. As John and Rob had noted, it's about $8.4 million or 119 parcels. When I drilled down into the data a little bit more, I noted that the large land areas, less the homestead portion of those properties, the average assessment was about $92,000. So, when you see some of the numbers that I'm going to present next, it's taking that average of those larger parcels. As they noted, the agricultural parcels are in fact considerably lower. The assessments on average were around $17,000. If you are granted the conservation easement and your parcel is at the average of $92,000, your 50% exemption knocks $46,000 off of your assessed value, and using the actual tax rates for this past fall of 2014 for school and library of just under $22, you would have a benefit of about $1,000. Again, higher or lower depending on your actual property value, but on average, about $1,000. If you were granted the 90% in perpetuity exemption, it would be close to double that amount or up to about $1,800. So, that allows you to see if, you know, what does this benefit mean to somebody who is putting that restriction on their property. On the next few slides, I want to show you what it means then to homeowners. If all eligible parcels are approved at 50%, you would have a reduction in your overall assessed value of $4.2 million, and as the town noted, that would be about $7 additional taxes if your home was assessed at 250. It jumps to $13 additional if everybody was approved at the 90%. So, that really just gives you the range of what the increase would be if the only thing that was approved by the school board was the conservation exemption. So, in and of itself, not a huge impact just for that. As was noted, we are also looking at the veterans exemption as well, and that has a range of dollar amounts. There are other moving parts that are associated with the taxable assessed values, and really, at the end of the day, that is the key factor that affects what the tax rates are. This slide shows you the trending on what the taxable assessed values have been since 2008, and in all of the years prior to the town revaluation, you can see that some years went up, some years went down. On average, over that time period, the cumulative increase, rather, was only about 0.36%. So, it hasn't been phenomenal growth, even though it has been an upward trend. With the revaluation, we increased about $200 million, and that was what resulted in those lower tax rates for this fall of 2014. That benefited so many of the parcels. So, the big unknown for us is what will that value be for the fall 2015 tax bills? We do have new growth. We know that based on the values that the town assessor has currently, there's about $5.2 million already on the books. We know that there will be other valuations that will be added to that. We don't know how much that will be yet. As we discussed at the end of the school's fiscal year, we did increase the amount that is put into our restricted portion of the fund balance for tax beneficiaries, because there were so many small claims filed by people who were not happy that their values increased and then filed claims or tax beneficiaries to lower those amounts. We know that based on the court decisions, $1.2 million in reductions of assessed value have been approved to date. There will be other reductions coming, but at this point, we have no idea what those amounts would be. And then, of course, are there any new exemptions or changes in the exemption mix? Those are all things that will ultimately affect that value. So, as you know from my presentations, I like to try to give you an order of magnitude or a range of potential impacts. If you start with what that taxable assessed value was just for Bethlehem, as of this past fall 2014 bills, or tax bills, that's the $2.822 billion on the first line. If every single parcel that was eligible for the conservation exemption applied and was granted it at the 90% level, that would be about a $7.6 million reduction in the rolls. Again, low odds of that happening, based on the process and, and the restrictions, but if it did, $7.6 million reduction. If everything was at the 50%, it would be a reduction of $4.2 million. So, again, a relatively small percentage of the overall assessments, but we need to look at the cumulative impacts. If you look at the veterans exemption, if you recall from the presentation last meeting, that's about $43 million if the school board adopts exactly as per the town's specifications for that exemption. There are many other options or permutations that the board can consider with that. If you look at the lowest possible level, which is the level that we noted Mahanison had adopted, that would be a $6 million reduction. So, again, there's a range. It could be a little bit higher, a little bit lower. Not counting in any small claims reductions, not counting any new growth, you're really looking at about a $40 million spread in the reduced assessed value amounts. So, what does that mean in terms of the tax rates? Worst case, with the greatest drop, you'd be looking about 37 cents more per thousand, or a 1.69% increase. For a $250,000 home, that's $93. On the other end of the spectrum, 7 cents per thousand, a 0.34% increase, you're looking at $19 potentially. So, that gives you at least some sense of the range of what this would mean to any other taxpayers who were not eligible for either the veterans exemption or the conservation exemption.
Can I just say, and those additional amounts are on top of any increase in tax rate?
Correct. These assumptions have not factored in any increase in the tax levy, just so that you could look at it purely, what does it mean in terms of the change in the taxable assessed values?
Judy, go ahead. And the veterans exemption is strictly the town portion, town of Bethlehem. The New Scotland isn't there, because that would be based on their equalization rate and-
Yes, these are just the Bethlehem numbers.
So, so your bottom figures, and basically what you've put together is the high end. Everything's done at the maximum, everybody applied. We'd be looking at $93 per every $250,000, and of that, it would be roughly $13 for the land conservation easement, and about $80 for the veteran exemption. On the low side, if both were approved, or independently or separately, we're looking at $19 per $250,000, but for the conservation, it would be about $7 for that, and about $12 for the veterans on the low. So-
Yes.
Each is individual and separate, but we wanted to make sure we gave it to you so that you saw the whole pie, because at the public hearing, we've got to separate them, so it's only about what we're talking about then at that time.
Judy, can you give a ballpark on, like, with New Scotland? Because I know that equalization rates are different, but because of the-
Not any longer.
Right, but this would make it a little bit different, because they can't do the easement, how-
It's not going to affect the equalization rates. What it affects is the apportionment of the total levy. So, if nothing changes on New Scotland and Bethlehem's goes lower than the New Scotland, residents are going to pay a slightly larger percentage of that total levy. Okay?
Even though they're exempt from applying for the easement?
They can't apply.
They can't apply for the easement?
Yeah, they cannot apply for the conservation easement in New Scotland.
Can't apply for it anymore, okay.
John, you had a question or a comment?
Just to reiterate, this, you feel the lower, he is giving to a limit between four and, honestly, we don't, we don't think that four is even an area. I would say the lower, ours is lower than that, like, a couple of tenths, maybe 50 cents. And that's probably the likely that there's going to be 50 cents to the cost of the conservation. Now, in saying, I'm lost, I do not, I speculate, it's what we've heard from other jurisdictions. It's our guess based on what we've heard from large landowners, so I'm pretty simple. Yeah, I might do it, you know, if the school owners come in. So, we really think it won't be anywhere even near the middle range. That to us, the low range that Judy shows us, it's the highest we think it could possibly be. But, we don't have numbers, I acknowledge.
And, and just so that I can put on the record, the reason we're doing this is because we have to show our potential liability on low end and high end to the maximum that we have, because there's no way of predicting, just like, we don't know with the veterans exemption or the conservation, who will apply, who won't apply, who could apply, but we know if we go on the maximum, we know that's at least as much as we're liable for.
Sorry, I'm off the boundary, too, I have a good idea. None of them apply to the town exemption, so you have a really good number there. For conservation easement, we really do not, but, but my guess is less than a dollar, if it's really successful. So, that's why we're not concerned for our taxes, but we acknowledge there is, there is a range.
Do we, do we know how much development has already been, in a sense, how many applications people have applied since their land was reassessed, and maybe they're developing it, that they wouldn't actually apply for this because they're already have development plans?
Well, those who are, those who are in development know it, and I suppose we could have some on that map that are in it, but in general, they're not. If land was owned by a development company, you know, it's not going in there, it's not in that process. I don't think anything in consideration will be changed at all. It's primarily people whose property is vacant and, and either are or not, and anyone who's planning to develop will. So, we don't think that'll happen. The only, the data we have are those who have spoken to us, and it's not that many, but people who've been, so who showed during the assessment, and said, all right, I'm thinking about doing this, can you tell me, would my land fit? It's generally, yeah, of course it would. And was the school district in the, is the county? We don't know, we'll see. And so, I, I apologize, I'm an analyst, as you know, for many years, but I cannot tell you what it's going to be. I would just say, the, the 4 million is really, to my view, about the highest it could be, and our expectations is fair enough. One last point I'll make, if it were at the worst of the high end of these, or the most redistributable, $93, and then we'll look up this number, it's about the average that your homeowner's taxes went down in average home. So, think of it that way. At the most widest implication of all of these exemptions and declines in value, it would be totally, you know, covered by this year's average reduction. And we've got two years hopefully of checks from New York State government to accept people.
So, so what you're saying is if by chance, hypothetically, it went to the highest, the $93 for both the veterans and the conservation easement would be basically made up because the town went through and fairly marketed everybody, and now that they're on that, they got the savings, but this would offset that savings entirely?
For those with the average, you know, there is no average.
Yeah, just the law averages.
For typical homeowner, yeah, it's about that level. Not everyone does, but, you know- For those, your typical homeowner, yeah, it's about that level. Not everyone went down, but you know, the numbers are very, very good. Even higher proportion, I think we showed you, 68% of taxpayers in your district homeowners went down, 73% of the senior homeowners. If you look at anyone who did slightly better than they would have done without the reassessment, it goes up to about 80%. So, you know, by and large, things are good, and again, I can't absolutely guarantee this, but we're seeing a lot of growth, a lot of activity in the plan board for commercial projects and apartments too, which by and large give you valuable and don't add dearly as enough school children. Kids who want their kids in schools here generally are buying, so they'll be homes, they're not, they're not leaving apartments. Thank God, we have to step on Judy's time to get addition.
That's okay.
My quick two questions, Judy. Do you have a breakdown of how many are agriculture parcels versus large land? You had noted like the 17,000 average assessment and 92,000 for land, large land.
I do. And do you have that at your fingertips, Rob?
For all parcels, all one, I think, or, I think for parcels were large, large, large land, home size properties, 30 for, for the agricultural. I don't know the value, so I'll tell them ahead.
Right.
Well, I think it was, I think it was, I think it was 500,000 for the ag property.
Yeah, it was much lower for the ag properties, and that's where you got that lower value, so.
So about 30% of the properties were ag, roughly?
In Bethlehem Central, really, the majority of the ag properties are RCS.
And my second question, can you provide us at a later time, the 2005, where we were taxable assessed value? Just going to Charmaine's point that we were at a different time in 2005, I would like to see the difference in assessment at that point.
Like the tax on true at that time?
At that time, when they did the initial survey.
Yep, I will provide that. Only 10 more slides to go. Just kidding. So the key decision points at the public hearing is their support from the community, where they are willing to absorb the cost of this new exemption for these parcels. And that will be what the community will be giving feedback on, and of course, the same night, we'll be having the veterans exemption public hearing as well. So again, there's no impact to the school district in terms of the money that we collect. Is the community willing to support the granting of these new exemptions that grants a benefit to some that will be paid for by others who are not eligible? So the veterans exemption hearing will start at 6:30. It will be here at the high school on the 17th. The conservation exemption hearing starts at 7:00. And then the decision point will come. Again, it doesn't have to be made at that meeting. You can certainly wait until a meeting in January.
Right, which I believe the expectation is we won't make a vote on the 17th. We'll have that public hearing and we'll vote subsequent to that.
You want to have some time to think about it, certainly. And you can do one, both, neither. You can do varying levels. You have quite a few choices on the à la carte menu of what to consider with these exemptions. And then the regular board of education meeting will start immediately following the public hearings.
I have a couple of questions, but actually probably for Dr. Douglas. What vehicles do we have besides, we have the S and N to get the information out or the word out that we, I would personally like to have as many people get, be president, to be present and to come to the mic during that public hearing. It's almost like an immediate, it's an updated survey. So we have the S and N, but what else, how else can we get the word out?
Well, Marcy has time, but she's here tonight from the Spotlight, so it's nice to see you back, Marcy. So I'm sure the Spotlight will assist us, and if you need to contact us tomorrow, we'll give you the details and the times and so forth. We'll be continuing to do the S and Ns. We have placed it on our website. We did talk to the Times Union the other day, whether or not they run it. That's a different media cycle. You know, our district communication will put out the information as best they can, but other than direct mailing to every resident, that would be costly.
Joe Allen to get something on the Bethlehem Channel scroll.
The BCT, BCNTV, yes.
Because I know a lot of senior citizens watch that.
Yeah, never, honestly, I don't think we've ever explored that, that channel. I know Nick has a good contact there because he takes care of all of our video footage there.
And I know you asked us, would we consider moving the location of our meeting? I think we should consider that because with the veterans, I want people to come and tell us because that's, that's data gathering in, live. So let's get as many, try to get as many people here as possible, and let's have enough comfortable space for them to gather, I would suggest to the board. Because we also have the veterans exemption hearing and there may be some other-
You have a major presentation.
Yeah, agenda items that people want to come out for, so I would urge the board to consider that this room may accommodate people, but may not. But we should be ready to accommodate as many people who turn out.
Play. The play may not be down, but we could use the cafeteria very easily like we do with our budget. That is very easily set up and provides ample space. Yeah, it, it's hard just to clean up because you also have the big strike in front with the platforms and so forth.
But we'll definitely choose a location that is, we'll handle the crowd.
But the location will be at the high school, just so that, that's clear.
Let's provide good signage.
Any other questions for Judy at this time? Thank you, Judy. Okay, at this time, the board would recognize anyone from the audience who would like to address the board on a particular agenda item. If so, please come forward, state your name.
Jonathan Fishbein.
How you doing?
I'm fine. How are you?
Good.
Charmaine, you just indicated you'd like everyone possible to come and participate, and you wanted to hear from the whole community. But we've only allowed half an hour. And even if people spoke for two minutes, I have a feeling you're going to run out of time, like we did with the Clarksville decision. So I'm wondering if we might want to start earlier, allow more time, because if you're looking for all of these people to come in and you don't allow time for it, you're going to end up with a lot of angry people, and that's not what you want.
No, we'll make sure that people have an appropriate time to address the board. If we need to extend the time, we would.
Right, but we may put limits, I know we've done that in the past, where people have said you have X number of minutes and then you must relinquish the mic, but for-
Definitely, we do want to hear from the public.
But I think it is legal to extend the public hearing, even though the other one is scheduled.
Right.
As long as you're running concurrently.
And we kind of did have, I think, at the Clarksville, we might have had a yes and no microphone so that we could judge what the people wanted.
Well, we have to be mindful too that we're running two public hearings the same night, so some people may have come for the conservation easement and they're waiting their turn to speak, but they're behind the veterans, so we just have to manage that.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, moving on. We have item number eight. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action, items A through C.
Some move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number nine, professional personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action, items A through H. That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do have question D. Now, is this person already employed? Oh, so he's adding point one, so what-
This was our engineering proposal from last year's.
Remember when we added the engineering class at the middle school, the increase in the budget was a .1 FTE? We actually had initially had someone who were, was interested in it, but they took another job, so it's a current staff member who's going to pick that up.
So what does he, what does his total FTE?
1.1.
1.1, okay. Because that's what usually happened in the past, that's why I wondered about it. Because I didn't think anybody would come to just do a point. Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? And item B is a tenure appointment for Chris Holiday. We'd like to congratulate him on that. Moving on. Item 10, support personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action, items A through E.
Some move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Any knows that carries? Item number 11, correspondence for action, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence, action items A through B.
So, a second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any knows? Any abstentions that carries?
Can I ask, is Mr. Hazelton here?
He was here at our appointment when we appointed him. This is just the, recognizes officially the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, the Board of Education would recognize anyone from the audience who would like to make a statement to the board on any non-agenda item? Being on, okay, great. Future meetings, as stated before, we'll have the public hearing on December 17th here at the high school, starting at 6:30. There'll be two. There'll be one on the veterans exemption and then one on the conservation easement, and then a regular board meetings after that. And then the next meeting after that will be Wednesday, January 7th. And that meeting will be at the Hamilton Elementary School, starting the public portion, starting at 7:00 PM. The meeting after that is Wednesday, January 21st at Glenmont Elementary, and that will be also the public portion at 7:00 PM. We do need to go back in to an executive session.
Just for a brief, no action to take on collective negotiations.
Matt, I just have one other question. Just thinking back of when we did these forums before, I know that Jody used to be like online, taking in people from outside that couldn't make it to the meeting. Are we going to try to set that up again?
I don't think we did that last year at different meetings that we had.
We did that for like the major facility and like budget.
We did, I thought we did that for a few of them, you know?
But did you do it, because-
No, okay.
Because I was wondering, did you do it for Clarksville? Did you do it for the cell?
I thought we did.
But say we're public hearing. I think a public hearing. I mean, people could submit something in writing, I believe.
Do I have a motion to go in the executive session?
So will.
That's a first and a second. All in favor? Aye. And again, we will not be coming back to take any official actions. Pig students, please come up and sign out if you have a paper that needs to be signed by the board members. We're here.